Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome to this December 19th meeting of the New London Board of Selectmen. We'll begin by asking if there are anybody in the audience that has a public comment they want to make that's on anything that's not on our agenda. I'm looking around behind the podium and I don't see anything. I would like to make a public comment this evening for just a moment, please. I'd like to ask what's happened to trust and civility. Must we in New London lower ourselves to the state of affairs in Concord and Washington? I have received accolades for the way the selectmen, Nick Baer, Ashley Sebold, conducted Monday's community forum. That happened because we trust each other and trust each other with and work with civility. On Monday, a few attendees at the meeting jumped to speak first, challenging our veracity and competence and repeating each other to each other in attempts to suggest that we were not aware of the details of the projects we were talking about, a secure and efficient police workplace, and septic oversight for the general good of our environment. For those few, the message sent was clear. We don't trust you, our elected and volunteer leaders. By the time these few had spoken, the civility of the event had been cracked. For those of you who were there, you know what I'm talking about. Lack of trust goes beyond Monday's event. Staff are almost daily receiving right-to-know requests that suggest there must be something hidden from the public that is essential to the operation of the town or that will support a contrary view. Staff are working overtime on weekends to respond. I've seen them here on Saturdays. I've seen them here after dark at night. Meanwhile, essential work in the finance office, the clerk's office, the town administrator's office, and all through the town is being affected. It's time to trust. It's time to set show that New London is different than some of these other places. Thank you. Now, we will move on to the business this evening, which just coincidentally happens to be the adoption of a proposed septic regulation. Nick, do you have anything new you want to add from what you've told us in our previous meetings and on Monday?
No, I don't really have anything else to add. I guess the one comment maybe I didn't get an opportunity to mention when we had the conversation on Monday was, you know, I think there's folks who are hesitant or concerned about having a regulation put upon them. And I guess I'd say, you know, a lot of people are doing the right thing, and I think that's wonderful, and I think those people should be applauded. And I think it's really keeping the water clean and contaminants out of our environment. I think those are all great things. The other thing it does is it prevents other folks from contaminating your water. I think, you know, we're all trying to maintain some sort of environmental water quality that for human consumption and for everybody's recreation and pleasure and that we love in this area. And so I think, you know, it's not just your water or your septic system we're concerned about. We're trying to make sure that the entire town has a system set up so that we can maintain our water quality. So I guess that's the only comment I'd have.
Thank you. Bebe, do you have anything more you want to add from your work with this group?
I just want to thank everybody who's been involved in this project, including these folks sitting here in the front and Nick and the other volunteers that came to the focus group that we had. And we took everything that they said to bear and made changes to this. And I appreciate the comments that were made at the community gathering on Monday, too. I have not heard from anybody since then, so I hope that means that people are supportive of it. And I look at it as a great kind of public awareness project that we're going to be working on and a service that we're giving to the residents of the town to help them understand the importance of pumping out their septic systems. So just that's, I just thank everybody for their help along the way. And so we, the three of us, really haven't had a chance to discuss this. I just wonder if the two of you have any specific questions or concerns.
I was going to ask Janet that next.
Actually, I don't. I, you know, I think about, the question was raised about how much it costs to have your septic system pumped.
And I can address that.
Okay, but I think the other side of the coin is if pollution gets into our lakes, it's far more expensive to clean up. So we don't want that to happen. And as we all know, water runs downhill. So, you know, we don't want to see septic systems failing. And I think this is a small price to pay to make sure that we're being safe and responsible with regard to our septic systems.
So I have followed periodically when you've told us what you were doing and working with the other three communities and the lake groups and so on. And I, you know, applaud you for putting the time and effort into it. And Nick, thank you. I don't know when you took over the job of health officer, whether you realized how many extra things we'd be able to find for you to do. But thank you for this and for everything else that you do. So I'll open it up and see if there's questions, comments that people in the audience want to make. I'm looking front row. John, I haven't called on you yet, please. I want to see if the people in the front row here look like they may want to speak to the issue. You please come to the microphone. I'll get to you, John, but I work from the front back here.
There we go. Okay. I'm Elizabeth Harper from the Lake Sunapee Protective Association. And I just wanted to thank everyone who's worked on this. We've been trying to support and provide data to all of the towns in the watershed about this issue. All of the watershed towns have had, you know, five to 10 septic failures every single year for the last 10 years. And the intent of this regulation is to try to prevent that from happening. If this is passed tonight, then you all would be the third town in our watershed to have passed this. And that really goes a long way to protecting water quality. So thank you for all who have worked on this.
Thank you. Anybody else? John? Okay, John, you're up.
Could you read the regulation, please?
John, it's multiple pages long. I believe copies have been posted on the website for an extended period of time. And unless others would like that, I'm going to rule that we will not read the entire regulation this evening.
Can you tell me when it goes into effect?
I can point out highlights.
That'd be fine.
Point out, it goes into effect January 1st, 2026. It's a regulation that would require all homes in New London with individual sewage disposal systems to pump their system once every three years. We have waiver language here that I can read that into the record if you want me to. Owners of residential properties may apply for a waiver to the Board of Selectmen or designee criteria for a waiver shall demonstrate usage of 50% or less of a septic system capacity on an annual basis. Examples would include permanent occupancy that is 50% or less of the system's capacity. For example, one to two occupants with a three to four-bedroom system or seasonal or intermittent occupancy that is six months or less within a 12-month period. In no case shall a septic tank be pumped less often than once every six years. Waivers shall not be granted for commercial properties or residential rental properties. Again, effective date, January 1st, 2026, because we are going to take this year to do public awareness around the community. And also will allow the town employees to set up the tracking system that they're going to use to be able to send out reminders to people.
Right. I just wanted to be clear. You mentioned six years and that. So we have until from 2026 to, what is that, six years later, which is 32 to pump? What was the three-year? I wasn't quite clear.
The requirement is going to be once every three years.
After the six years?
No. Once every three years will be the requirement to pump your septic system. And the evidence will be submitting a receipt. And we've already had conversations with all of the pumpers in the area, how they, you know, the idea being that they're going to be doing a visual inspection on the system at the same time. So if they see deficiencies in the system, they'll make note of it on the receipts. And so those receipts will be submitted to the town. The six-year number is if you're one person living in a five-bedroom house, you're not going to need your system pumped every three years. And so then there will be, there's a waiver process for that individual to come to the selectmen and say, I don't, you know, can I get ahead a waiver from the three-year requirement? But we're saying maximum six years to pump.
For one person living in a home? Do we have records of how many one persons we have in New London?
No, well, no. No, and, you know, this also allows us to build up our database of septic systems. Nick's class has, all that work that they did with the Pleasant Lake study that they did last year. And they started plotting a lot of the septic systems. This allows us to really
Right. If someone, yeah, if somebody pumped their septic in 2025, does that mean?
Yep, then they just, they'll submit their receipt. So that's the other thing. This year, we're hoping we're going to get people to be submitting their receipts now so we can start working on this. If they pump their system in July of 2025 and they submit their receipt, the law goes into effect. I mean, the regulation goes into effect January 1st. They don't have to pump again until 2028.
Right. Till 2028, okay. So the, since it goes into effect in 2026, it would not extend, that three years would not extend to 2029?
No. If, even if somebody bumped their system in 2024 and submitted evidence of that, they, they'll be explaining this right, grandfathered in or whatever you want to call it.
Right. So it's best to wait till 2026 to pump?
Yeah, why wait? Just do it.
Are there other comments or questions that people have they want to ask?
Yeah, I was going to say, and I wanted to address one of the points that this gentleman made on Monday morning as well.
My name is Nick Shai. I live at 25 Pressy Court here in town. I do not have a septic tank. I do not have a leach field. So a lot of people might wonder, what the heck is he speaking about? I'm speaking in favor of this regulation because I know it is one piece of a very important puzzle to keep us all enjoying the lakes and the water quality that we have in this area. What I can do is to do little things on my property, not use fertilizer. Be careful of what spills on my property. Be careful of where the runoff goes so that it doesn't go into the street and it infiltrates on my property as opposed to off on Pressy and then down into Main Street. So I think this is an important regulation for the town. It is one step that we can all take to ensure that the future for our kids and for those yet to come will be of high quality and enjoyable. I also want to speak as a volunteer who has participated in planting projects and drainage and rain garden situations down at Buckland. Again, those are small properties, small opportunities. But working with LSPA and LLSPA, we've, I think, solved or hopefully solved a small piece of the puzzle that will keep blooms from happening on the Little Lake and then more projects that'll happen on the Big Lake that also affect New London residents. So highly recommend that you approve this and vote to approve this regulation and support quality water. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else?
Go ahead.
I'm Philip Brown, 59 Walooa Road. So first of all, thank you for the presentation Monday. It was very informative. It was, I did learn a lot from that. I think the regulation is fine. My only question was why the entire town versus the areas? Before I get to that, and I know you said you were going to comment to that, and so that'd be great. Going back to the issue that John raised, if a septic system was commissioned because you have a new home in, in my case, 2021, and there's only one or two of us living in a home designed for a three or four-bedroom, then we would go, would it be 2027? Would be the date we would be required to, does that make sense? Am I on the right track on that? Okay. That was clarification, thank you. And if you can just comment to me, all of you, about the, why didn't we adopt something that our sister communities did? Where they restricted it to the shoreline districts and the watersheds?
Sure.
Why, why the over?
Yep.
I use the word overreach, so I apologize. But thank you so much, I appreciate the
So when we started this conversation, we did think about doing it the same way that Sunapee did it, which where they just started with the shoreline overlay district. And then we talked about, well, you know, there's water coming in from tributaries and streams and things like that, all going. So maybe we'll do that district plus the shoreline district. And then, as conversations continued and as we spoke to our other towns as well, we said, you know what? This town sits up on a hill. Everything is going down into the watershed. Let's just do the whole town. And Sunapee is now looking at amending their ordinance to include the whole town as well. Newbury, I'm not sure, are they talking whole town or are they just talking shoreline? They're still considering the options, yeah. So that was kind of the decision that we've had over the last 18 months. And when we talked to the town employees about how many systems this could include, you know, it's a big number. It's about 1,400 to 1,500 systems. But we, you know, we're going to keep our fingers crossed and we're going to, and we're going to hope this works. And that's kind of the, Nick, if you want to add to that, please do.
The only addition I'd say is sort of the comment I made on Monday, which was, you know, whether it's on the lake shore or on a hill that runs into a stream, that stream is heading towards the lake, or that water is going into our groundwater system, which could end up in your well or the neighbor's well. And so I feel like this idea of just a shoreline, it's not just the shoreline properties that are contributing to our nutrient loading in the systems, nor is it just their issue to deal with. I think it really is that everybody who has property in New London has a piece of, who has a septic can potentially contaminate a water body. And so I think that, that would beg the question, we all should probably contribute to the Absolutely.
So is there a concern that by making the entire town, there's perhaps an opportunity for a lack of vigilance on those areas that are of the greatest concern, which would be in the shoreline or properties near streams or properties near watersheds? Because it's, it's the initial, I read the November 21st, initially, it's just voluntary compliance is the intent. So does it need more teeth for those areas that are closer in versus?
When you say voluntary compliance, you mean because we have three years to comply, everyone has?
He means in this first year, in this year.
Oh, in 2025.
In 2025, yeah. Well, that's a good, it's a good question. And I think that's why we went this regulation route is because if we need to add more teeth to it, like, for example, there's no fine if you don't, right? Because we don't want this to be punitive. We want this to be public awareness and a service to the community, right? So, but if we, if we see a lot more failures in the future and we feel like we do need to add more teeth to it, we can amend it quite easily, so. But thank you for your questions.
Others? Okay, then I guess I would entertain a motion that we approve the, we'll get exactly correct language here, the septic health regulation proposed by the health officer as a health officer ordinance for the town of New London on the document that is first dated November 21st, 2024, and subsequent editorial changes that may have been made to it that are non-substantive.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. And nice that you're doing it all at once, I think, so rather than a little bit here, a little bit there.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a follow-up on the whole police facilities project. A lot has been going on in the last couple of weeks. But I'll remind you that on December 11th, we received a message from Ashley Sebold, who's sitting in the audience here tonight, who's been the chairperson of the Police Facilities Advisory Committee, making a final recommendation for the site. We let the cat out of the bag on Monday. So it's there, but I will just remind you that the concluding paragraph of her memorandum to the board says that the committee firmly believes that constructing a new police station at Siemens Road on the Garvey property, tax map listed, is the most practical and sustainable solution to meet the needs of the police department and the community. We appreciate the board's support throughout this process and look forward to collaborating on the successful completion of this project. So I think what we have for now is several things. Do we want the committee to continue to work on this project for some period of time? And if so, what and how? And second of all, what do we want to do now to move forward and be prepared at town meeting to present the warrant article to fund the beginning stages of this? So I would say, to begin with, I would at least like to see the committee, if Ashley and the group are willing, to stay in place without a specific task right now, but to help us with whatever needs to be done in the next several weeks and whatever additional questions we might have from both Colliers and LBA during that process. If you're willing, Ashley, she's going to say no. But first of all, thank you. You know, you and your eight colleagues really did a wonderful service for us, and thank you.
No, thank you, guys. I think it's been really, more than anything, I think it's been really informative as we've gone through this process of understanding sort of the history of the police station and where they've resided and then just really looking at the needs, the current needs and what they might be in the future. So thank you, guys. I know Tony sent the committee an email, this Thursday, Thursday or Tuesday, just saying we should reconvene after the holidays and the beginning of the year, which I agree. But I think, Bill, we can probably connect and just see what the content of that potential touch base might be. He suggested Friday, the 3rd. I think that might be a little too soon after the holidays. But why don't we touch base and see what the content of that is? And I think I'd love to give the option for our committee members to continue on and see who's interested. I do think there are a fair number that are interested in continuing on to the next phase. But would love to just give them the opportunity to say they'd like to continue on, if that's okay.
So I think, Ashley, the ideal thing would be to have you and Tony and whoever else wants to gather, to maybe get together before the 9th, however, which is, you know, the next selectment. We're going to go three weeks. And so if the 3rd sounds early, just because the next two weeks are strange with the holiday following it. If you're up for the 3rd, fine, but if it could happen before the 9th, I think that would be helpful.
Okay. I'll go back and see if we can schedule something for before the 9th. And we'll go from there. And then, Bill, we can touch base and just see what the content is of that, and we'll go from there. Cool?
I also sent you all some suggestions on what we might do in terms of community outreach and so on, which I would suggest that we take under advisement and be prepared to really put our teeth into it on the 9th. Unless somebody, let's see, either of you want to talk about it tonight? I'm happy to, but I'm aware
I just think it's going to be very important to get out there in the community as much as possible in many different forms and forums to get, to get the facts and the figures out there so people, the voters, this is what they asked us for. And to see the big picture and as people spoke up at the meeting the other day, see what the plan is going to look like over the next few years as much as we can.
Yep.
We have a ballpark number, but it's not the final number. And the next year, we'll be working on getting to the final number and
My assumption, and this is truly just an assumption, is when we move on to this next phase of really looking at materials for the outside and looking at the inside, that's where we're really going to be able to spend some time thinking about costs. And that's, I think, where the majority of the cutting will come from. I'll call it cutting, but I think that's really where the majority of the spending will be. And I think that's our biggest opportunity to really look and think about that critically.
Thank you, Ashley.
Anything else?
Anything you want? I would just comment that I'd had a brief discussion with Tony on Monday. You know, I think that the last set of numbers related to the site you've recommended were, did not have as much detailed thought put into them as some of the earlier ones. And so I think probably we should not put a lot of weight on that particular set of information. They, they worked very hard to meet our deadline of Monday. And I think there's more to be said, so I'm glad to hear that Tony's already back in touch with you.
Great. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else want to talk about the police facility tonight? Okay, hearing none. Kim, would you just help us confirm the COLA in the budget, please? Or what we're going to do with the COLA in the budget?
Okay, so the budget currently contains a COLA of 3%. You put that in as a placeholder, awaiting the CPI that came out. The CPI came out at 3.5. So your work tonight is to discuss whether you will stay with the 3.0 or do something different.
Okay, I would note that we've actually been looking at the New England CPI, which is at 3.1, I believe, for through November, so.
Yeah, I have the Northeast.
Even tighter to New England, to New England is 3.1. So I think we're pretty close. And for the benefit of the audience, for several years now, what we've been trying to do is to use a consistent method of deciding on the COLA, which was to pick the publication in December of the CPI for the last 12 months and come as close to that number as possible so that we're not in any way influenced by the events of the, of recent times. And I believe, if I'm right, that this is the first time in five years that the COLA is going to be slightly higher than the national CPI. Is that right?
Yep, we have
Social Security?
Typically, right. So I think we, last year, Social Security was 3.2. And the town's COLA was 2. The year before that, Social Security was 8.7, and the town was 5.25. 2022, Social Security was 5.9. Town went with 4.5. And then 2021, the town did go slightly above. Social Security was 1.3, and the town went with 1.5. I'll also note that Nancy Rollins did ask that you consider a COLA of 2.5. She points out the CPI she was looking at is 2.7. And she notes that the Social Security CPI increases, or COLA increased is 2.5.
So unless somebody, either one of you cares to change our tentative decision to make the COLA 3% in the budget we're working on, I think we can solidify that and move on.
Yep.
Okay, new business. Putnam, I see you have a request for us this evening.
So my name is Putnam Kitter. I'm the rec director. And you will see, I'll put a little plug while I'm here, that we are in the process of setting up for our Festival of Trees event, which is going to be starting Sunday night with these decorated trees by various businesses and groups. And people will come in. There's a schedule online on the rec department website, and you can come in and vote on your favorite tree. And we take all the money and we have the winning tree organization donated to a charity of their choice. So it's a really great thing to come in. Fun thing to do over the holidays. So if people are around looking for something to do, I encourage you to come in. Yes, so I would like to request special permission for our next big event here in town with the rec department for winter carnival and to have special permission to allow alcohol and beer to be served at our Adult Spelling Bee on Saturday, February 1st. We would be using the same caterer we used last year and ensuring that all the necessary licenses, inspections, and insurance coverage are in place, which should be pretty easy since we're using the same person we used last year. So we wanted to make sure we had special permission from you to be able to do this again this year as it does add, add something to the event. And the event is part of the Winter Carnival, three-day event as a whole.
And that will again be this year in Whipple Hall?
What's that?
That event will also be here in Whipple Hall again? So the alcohol will be served and contained within this building?
Yes, Saturday, February 1st, probably 6:00 to 9:30. That's the Spelling Bee event that night. That's the spelling bee event that night.
Was there alcohol last year?
Yes.
Did that help the spellers at all?
I think when we are, I think it just adds something to the event. I think sometimes people expect, you know, things at these kind of events, and I think sometimes we can go either way on it, but it did add something to the event, and I think it was something, if we're asking people, we, you know, we raise money for ourselves, we do it with the New London Rotary Club, and so we have the teams pay money to do it. So, it is a cash bar, so it is kind of a special circumstance. It wouldn't be something we want to be doing all the time, but I think for this.
Okay.
So, as you all probably recall, I have a role in this.
Yeah, you do.
And so, I'll recuse myself from this because I don't want to be accused of supporting my own drinking habits.
Yeah. I'm in favor of allowing alcohol at the.
BB? Okay?
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Great.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay. Next item is the revised budget request from the New London Hospital, which doesn't often happen, but somebody wants us to accept a lower number. Would you just quickly remind us what this is all about?
Yes. The hospital sent us a revised request for the fiscal year 2026 budget at $191,910, which is a reduction of 19,000, a little over 19,000. And they have changed their, they've moved their methodology to utilize a five-year average of 911 calls, so we're benefiting from that with some discount. The budget committee is aware of it as well.
So, you all have somewhere in the many memos that we've had recently, the letter from Lisa Cohen, dated December 9th. I will simply notice, because it comes up frequently, that the $191,000 that we're being asked to pay is substantially less than the total of 500,000 that they get from all the community. So, we're not, we're not alone in this, and this continues, I think, to be a very valuable service for the town, and it's nice that we get something for a little bit less. So, unless somebody objects, I would suggest that we instruct Lynn to reduce that in our, our budget.
So moved.
Yep. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have an abatement to correct a billing error with Kim, would you please?
Right. So, we actually have an abatement, and we have supplemental warrant, so we need to abate the tax bill that was sent to one property in error, and the supplemental tax warrant is to bill the proper property. So, there's no reduction in taxes being paid. It's just a matter of a tax bill was incorrectly sent or put in the name of one property. So, we're going to abate that one and send it to the correct owner.
So, again, we have several pages of information here. I would entertain a motion to approve the tax abatement for Matt Maturice and to approve the collection of taxes from Shad.
So moved.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item on the agenda, this is a working session detour for a minute. I've provided you with a draft of the arson report for the annual report. I would appreciate any feedback that you want to give me in the next week or so on that, and barring a total rewrite that one of you wants to do, I'll submit that by the end of the year.
Excellent.
All right. Thanks, Bill.
Your report, Kim?
Okay. I have nothing big to report. We're working in the town office. A lot of year-end things are going on now. As Bill pointed out, we have several emails for information, so we're collecting all of that information, and so that's about all I have.
Okay. Committee reports? Janet?
I don't have anything.
BB?
Budget committee met last night. We heard from the Conservation Commission, and we heard from Sam, did a great job for highways, highway transfer station and his whole budget. Charlie Kelsey had some additional questions for Jay, which I think might have resulted in a reduction, slight reduction in Jay's budget. All went well.
As I understand it, the budget committee this year is not actually making changes until the end, they're entertaining.
Correct.
Suggestions?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, okay. So, that'll all come out sometime in January when you all.
Right.
Get to that point of your work, okay? Minutes of December 5th, Janet's name was misspelled in one place, otherwise, I think. Have you all had a chance to read those, or?
I actually didn't.
Would you like to defer this till the 9th?
Yeah. Do you mind?
No.
Okay.
Okay, we'll defer that to our next meeting. Okay, you have the list of future meetings. We will meet three weeks from tonight, again, on January 9th. I would add to the list there, the school, regional school district deliberative session on the January 4th. And do we know what's going to happen with the?
Yeah, I didn't put, I didn't put the citizens committee because I don't think that's been resolved yet. We'll find out from John whether they'll hold the meeting and then let people leave early to go to the school meeting or what. So, we'll, we'll find out.
Yeah.
We'll post that.
Very important that a lot of people go to that January 4th.
It's going to be particularly interesting this year. Apparently, there's a petition article that actually has some teeth in it, so.
Yep.
Okay. So, that's, was it 9:30?
Nine.
Nine o'clock, nine o'clock at the high school, right?
Get there early if you want a seat.
Really? That.
It sounds like they're expecting a big crowd, yeah.
All the more reason why than, Kim, trying to do something here and then get people to scoot over there on icy roads is probably.
Or he may not even want to hold the meeting at all. He may just want people, because if they have to get there by 8:30, 8:15.
Yeah.
Okay. You'll work with John.
Yeah, I'll talk to John about it.
Fantastic. So, other, other business, I would like to suggest that in the, that we start the new year on a, the note of sitting down with the precinct commissioners and either one of their meetings or one of our meetings and discuss water conservation in the town and perhaps either their first meeting in January or our meeting on January 9th. Is that acceptable to both of you?
Sure. Yes.
Kim, would you work with Rhonda or whoever is now doing that to see if that can be scheduled in conjunction with one of our already scheduled meetings? That would be fantastic. Okay. I just have a couple more little things I want to, want to say because we're getting toward the end of my time here. You know, in 12 weeks from now, I'm going to leave this board, and I wanted just to let you all know as you get ready for celebrating New Years, and maybe that also, where I stand on some, a couple of important issues that I would like to see is really addressed during my remaining time here, and perhaps also serves as a notice for those that haven't heard that I'm officially not going to be running for reelection. First of all, I'd like to comment, I think water really is critical, and I'm glad we've just decided to try to sit down with the commissioners to talk about conservation. As we know, there are two, two sources here in town. There are the private wells that are in much of the town, but there are also the public wells and pipes managed by the precinct, and I think we all need to cooperate with the precinct and with the selectmen in trying to assure that the public water supply is sustainable. But I think we need to recognize that the water comes from more than one place. It's not just from the precinct. There's a significant amount of water that's coming from private wells in the town. Second of all, it will cause no surprise that I think the police facility is an essential part of the town's infrastructure and for both safety and for service in the current century. Not, this is not something that we're doing for this year. This is a long-term project, and I think the process, as Ashley so nicely said, is just going through another step. It's a, it's not a one and done project at all. Third of all, I think the disruption that we've had with the Twin Pines and continuum projects is really quite unfortunate because I think they were going to address two important issues. One was the need for smaller housing. What I've heard from the Housing Commission loud and clear is we, our housing problem is not housing in general, it's housing for smaller, smaller units. I don't believe the population of the town is really going to grow because I think whatever additional people we get, we have enough retired folks in town who also make celestial departures on a fairly regular basis. So, I think, you know, we can be looking forward to a level population in town, but we really do need to deal with that housing. And second of all, most people don't recognize, but with those projects potentially not being done, we're going to lose some major revenue sources in the next few years, which are going to have to be addressed. And finally, I would urge the two of you to work with the budget committee to start reserving more money now for other big projects that are down the road. Believe it or not, the police facility is the only short-term major capital project that we have. If there's a water need that's 10 to 20 years out, I've spoken with the fire chief and the fire wards recently, I know you have, Janet, and, you know, they're talking about 2032 for their big project. So, we have a decade here when we actually don't have a lot of other big projects, but we should not cause that to fail, to begin to make provision for it, particularly for the, the fire projects. And with that, we can now, I think, unless there's any other, our business?
I would suggest that in the past, we have closed town offices on Christmas Eve at noon, and I would suggest we do that again this year so that the staff knows that they can go home at noon, Christmas Eve.
Done.
Definitely.
Done.
Okay.
So, I will.
I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
And thank, and for those of you that are here on the staff, thank you for all that you have done this year and in my almost three years, and I look forward to a few more weeks with you, but that's it. And now, we'll sign the vouchers, but I'll entertain a motion to go into non-public session to discuss a real estate matter.
So moved.
Aye.
BB?
Aye.
Helm, yes. We will come back out of the non-public session simply to sign the pay vouchers and other documents that we have here.